Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending this morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for a pledge to the flag.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, and the principle of liberty and justice of our.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment. Is there anyone that has anything that they'd like to offer this morning? Not all move on to the approval of our minutes of our August 1st meeting and workshops of July 31st and August 7th, and an executive session for litigation on August 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
They're moved and seconded that we approve those minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved. Mrs. Nguyen, would you please introduce yourself and then you.
Sally Nguyen, Le County Treasurer. We have receipts on August the 13th and 14th of $1,5,843.52. And this is to a total cash of $3,673,270.43. Our expenditures this week were $3,054,352.68. That brings us to a total, whoops, our tax line was $40,588.28. That brings us to a balance of $578,329.47.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report, subject to.
It's been moved and seconded any second. Excuse me. Thought I heard that. Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Good morning. Introduce yourself and proceed.
Chelsea Nadeley, National Resources. Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations, Bianca Corrigan, full-time correctional officer at the jail resignation effective August 5th of the last working day being August 2nd. Chandler Mc林克, full-time correctional officer at the jail resignation effective August 23rd. Jeffrey Patches, full-time correctional officer of jail resignation effective August 12th, last working day August 11th. Karen Nye, Office Support 1, jail resignation effective last working day August 9th. Kayla Aguero, Admin Enforcement Locate Assistant 2 in Domestic Relations, resignation effective August 16th. Krista Jaeger, Admin Assistant 1 in Domestic Relations, child abandonment effective August 12th. Patty Tingan, ID Program Specialist 1 at MHIDEI, retirement effective September 17th. And Alyssa Parsons, Juvenile Probation Officer 1, resignation effective August 14th.
Motion to approve those.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
The leaves of absence, David Santana at the Lebanon Correctional Facility, two and a half weeks, all paid, effective August 25th with an expected return of September 11th. Alexa Muniz Cruz from the Public Defender's Office, up to four weeks, all unpaid, effective July 26th, expected return date of August 23rd, and David Santana was all unpaid, I want to correct that. Stacy Boyer, Sheriff's Office, six-week LOA effective August 6th, with an expected return date of September 18th.
I so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve those leaves. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers and promotions, Carlos Cuero Carrera, promotion from Lance Corporal at the jail to Corporal at the rate of $28.01 per hour, effective August 18th. Brittany Bennett, change of status from part-time court clerk in the patrimonyary clerk of course to general clerk seeing the patrimonyary clerk of course at the rate of $1,117.67 by weekly effective August 5th. And Dawn Lee, change of status from full-time LPN at the Renova Center to casual call LPN, no change in her rate, effective August 23rd.
Motion approved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Under other transactions, Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following seven full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of $22.71 per hour, all effective August 19th, and that is Dustin Couch, Gary Fett, Gage Hess, Jared Spado, Kristen Mauer, Tiara Rivas Gonzalez, and Cassidy Hamilton. President Judge Chouak would like to hire Rebecca Watson as a law clerk at the rate of $1,862.56 by weekly effective August 19th. Information Technology Services would like to hire Angela Horst as an administrative assistant, too, at the rate of $1,394.69 by weekly effective August 26th. The Renova Center would like to hire Christine Reyes Delion as a full-time office support 2/medical secretary at the rate of $1,131.44 by weekly effective August 26th. The order of registration would like to rehire Philip Wagner Jr. as a regular part-time office support 1 at the rate of $14.3 cents per hour, effective August 19th.
I make a motion to approve these files.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Turning Costello, casework supervisor 1, we are removing the interpreter stipend from her, which would have been $1,500 annually, and that removal is effective August 31st. Teresa Figueroa, child abuse investigator, we are adding the interpreter stipend at $1,500 annually, pro-rated from the effective date of September 1st. Michael Gerson Jr., longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, a one-time 20-year longevity payment of $2,500, effective August 23rd.
Second.
They're moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so ordered. Thank you, Michelle. Morning.
Morning.
So as you got ready, you may introduce yourself and then proceed.
I'm Alex Ward, and I'm at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility. I'm in front of you, presenting the Business Association and Qualified Service Agreement from Prime Care. It is attached. I believe I've provided copies. Sorry, couldn't remember. The attached agreement acknowledges the Lebanon County Correctional Facility will abide by the Health Insurance Supportability and Accountability Act of 1996, aka HIPPA, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, ARA, and the Health Insurance Technology for Economic and Clinical Health Act, ITACT Act, as well as the regulations promulgated under the acts, the Federal Confidentiality Law, and the applicable state and local statutes and regulations, on behalf of Lebanon County Correctional Facility and request an accounting signature for the Prime Care Agreement.
I can motion to give this question the approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and been reviewed by council?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so basically we follow the law. That's what this also.
Yes, sir.
Any, yeah, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, you want to do that? Yeah, raise for that.
Good morning, Susan.
Morning.
Good morning.
You can introduce yourself and if your colleague would like to join. They may introduce yourselves and then proceed.
Susan Everly, President of the Lebanon Valley Economic Development, and my assistant, Cameron Graff. And we're here this morning, we're doing a next-generation farm loan for Caleb and Karina Graff, and the farm loan is through the next-generation program, and that requires, because it's tax-exempt financing, it requires that we present it to the highest official in the county, which would be the county of Rio.
I'll make a motion to approve the next-generation loan for $625,000.
Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Second. Any further spounding on this, or is it as simple as that?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you it's a 26.7-acre boiler farm. They have three boiler houses on the property, and good project for the county. It's a Valenamis boiler.
Any comments regarding the motion? I am going to vote on this just for disclosure. Susan is my sister-in-law, but I have no pecuniary interest in this transaction. So, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved. Anything, or had a schedule, if you have anything you'd like to utter? Okay.
That's a call so that it's appropriate for the farm.
Unintended, okay. All right.
Acres 26.7.
Right, guys, thank you.
Thank you. If he shows up longer, we'll move on.
What's that?
If it's going to come, but I'll patch her in the hall.
Oh, okay.
All right. Take care.
I could, yeah, move on to a few things that I have, if you'd like, that aren't really sensitive to the order.
Jamie, it's your birthday, so you do it every once.
Should we sing "Happy Birthday"?
No, we don't. He doesn't.
I mean, you could lead us in singing.
You know. I'm gonna start right away. You recognize. All right, I'll start with hotel tax grant applications. We have, you considered three of them a couple of weeks ago, and at that time tabled those pending receipt of more funds available, and we have in the meantime received two others. So I thought I would add those to it, to air those requests, and if there's anything you would like to do with the funds that are available at this point, that's up to you. And reminder, there were changes to the, to the policy or the guidelines, I'm sorry, the guidelines for the program at the last meeting.
And they were adopted after the first three came in?
Uh, yes, we already had, we had those three in hand that day, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So to, to, to reiterate, I guess, or to review those three, the first was from Ms. Morgan's Milkweed Antiques for a antique and artisan show being held at the Lebanon Valley Expo Center in, I believe it's in October. And their request was for a $5,000 grant toward a cost for the, for the event of $40,000, and there was a a narrative that was attached outlining the number of vendors they have and the states that they draw from and so on. Motorama Productions was the second one. They have a drag racing expo-type event that is held typically in January. I'm going on memory here from, yes, January. They have done this for several years. Their event occurring at the Expo Center, they are requesting a $7,500 grant out of a total project cost of $100,000. Penn State University Extension is having a Penn State Crop Conference and is requesting a $5,000 grant, and that one occurs in they have listed September through June of 2025, September 24th through June of 2025. Their date for the actual crop conference is February 4th of 2025. The additionals that have been received are from the Lancaster Kennel Club for an event that they are having at In the Net in Palmyra, coming up in the end of September, and the total project cost for having that event is $18,000, and they're requesting a $5,400 grant. And the final is Gretna Productions, doing business as Gretna Theater, this is the Gretna Theater 2024 season. Funds are used for marketing needs and bringing outside counties, folks from outside counties to Mount Gretna and Gretna Theater. Total cost $44,920, requesting a $5,000 grant. Last check, there is about $17,000, I believe, balance in the account available for these grants, so from there, it's, it's up to you.
Yes.
I do have a question. I had asked about how much we're getting each month, and a couple of observations. June was deposited, July was not, and we're in August. So I wondered how much is available for June and when will that get credited? And also, I'd like to point out that April through October, we average over $100,000 a month in income growth, so at 10%, that might be another $10,000 available. I'm just thinking out loud and asking for verification.
Well, I'll refer maybe to Sally for the first question. The second part of the question is, I think that money has already been received and encumbered or allocated for prior grant requests. It's my, my impression.
Is July?
No, you mentioned earlier, the average, you said, is $10,000 a month.
Yes.
And, or should, the average is $100,000 a month, 10% being, being $10,000, it's, it would be a little less than that, actually, but those funds would have been already passed.
But the point is, July has not been credited, so we might have more than $17,000.
You have to check every month. Last one was for $9,500. So once I disperse in August, which will be probably this, probably next week, I will disperse funds to the Lebanon Valley tourists, and then I will get 10% of what I send for dental collapse, but we only get that after we disperse the funds to tourist agency.
I'm sorry, I, I guess I.
All the hotel tax, that's collected in the account from all the operators, the hotels, spend breakfast, whatever, monthly. Okay, they have to file a report every month.
And when is their report due?
It's supposed to be due by the 20th of the month, but whatever they're filing for, let's see, we're in August. So they're filing reports from July.
Okay, so they, they have another five days to file the report. That answers my question.
But, yeah.
You asked about July.
Yes, July 20th.
That's when, yeah.
Those were.
When he got back.
August 20th.
That's the $9,500 we got back.
Okay, August 20th is when the next group of funds will come in. That's what I was trying to understand.
It'll be later than that.
It'll be late.
It has to take the circuit, the circuitous route, which is according to the law and according to your, to your ordinance, or to your resolution. Yeah, your ordinance, and it is, it goes to the, visit Lebanon Valley, Sally gets, Sally gets a dollar, 90, 94 cents of that dollar, I was gonna say 96, 96 cents of that dollar goes to VLB, visit Lebanon Valley. Visit Lebanon Valley then divvies that out, 55, 35, 10, the 10 being the county. So, so once the, once the reports are submitted, the, the payments are submitted July, then it takes that. So we're, we're three weeks from that. We're three weeks from that point, so that would be the one that is probably here soon, probably.
Well, to disperse them, I'd first this month, disperse them, or that in a month from the previous.
But, so that's not in the $17,000.
Correct.
But it might be, it'll probably will be, I'm sorry, finish, probably will be by the September 5th, but you don't have it today.
Okay.
Sorry.
But we have five proposals ahead of us, right in front of us, three of which came prior to the adoption of our guidelines, more stringent guidelines. We have $17,000, and what is your pleasure? Do we want to try to give some to all five of these? Do we want to scrutinize the last two more carefully because of the adoption, which, you know, guidelines, whatever your pleasure is, I'll be happy to entertain it if we can get a motion.
Well, I'd like to ask another question, if I may.
Certainly.
Is there any reason to rush through the ones that are not immediate? Can they be held till more funding comes in? The Motorama comes to mind. And even, even Dell's, perhaps?
Say, what, what are, what were the three that we have to lay table to the Kennel Club?
First three.
First three, Ms. Morgan's Milkweed, Motorama, and the Penn State Extension. In terms of how they, how the events will play out chronologically, I think they are the Kennel Club, Ms. Morgan, Gretna, Motorama, and C. Sound right? So if you're looking at them, Mr. Litz, I think you're asking chronologically, how they, how do they go? That's.
In other words.
That's that order.
Say that again, Jamie.
The Lancaster Kennel Club, then the Ms. Morgan's Milkweed Antique Event, then Gretna Theater, then Motorama Productions in January, and the Extension Prop Conference in February.
Question. So what is your pleasure? Have we answered all the?
Certainly.
Questions?
Well, I wouldn't mind giving, in chronological order, so to speak, $5,000 to each of the Kennel Club, the Morgan's Antiques, and the Gretna Productions, and then deal with the other ones when some more funds come in.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so moved.
And I do have one other question on that. Jamie, did Dell submit a corrected copy because he had his total budget at $1,250, and he's requesting a $5,000? That's not being corrected? Okay, he.
I don't, I don't think, is it, is it to be corrected?
Well, how can you have a project cost of $1,250 and ask us for $5,000?
Well, it's listed that way on two places in the application. It's on the proposal transmittal and it's on the application.
And I think the application is faulty and needs to be resubmitted.
You think, you, you're thinking it's a typographical error?
Well, did they really mean $12,500, or?
I don't think so.
Why would you ask for more money than, than it costs to run the conference?
Probably because you have in the past, and you can waive the guidelines. I don't think that's a typo. I mean, we can double-check with Dell, but.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, because I talked to him, and he said that it was a mistake.
Oh, well, then you knew.
But I don't, I asked him to submit it in writing, and that's why I wondered if you got the corrected copy.
No, we don't have anything to do with it. It's mistaken.
And so that's one of the reasons I didn't want to address this one today.
I, I don't know. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just surmising, I don't know how it would cost $12,500 there. It's a one-day event at the, at the Expo, their participants pay $10 each.
Well, then.
They'd have to have, you know, over 1,200 people for it to be covering that kind of a cost.
And you would think $1,250 would be the max that he would apply for. Just like, I'm, maybe I'm trying to be logical, and it's not.
I haven't received anything further to answer.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Ask a question about that?
Sure.
I mean, Jamie, is it possible that under the proposal transmittal, they'll list matching funds of $1,250?
$1,250.
Yeah, $1,250.
Right.
That's what he has to provide, but that's also the, the cost of the project. I mean, we're not sure if it's typographical.
So he's already getting paid $1,250. He's getting matching funds.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's confusing to me.
We can find out for sure about obviously his connection.
Yeah. Anything else you wanted to do before?
Nothing, not really. I think people has their votes here, but it's all right.
Yes.
Okay. All set. All right, good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Welcome to our meeting. And Brett, if you want to.
Sure.
Get things rolling while Michael is passing out the literature.
So I'll just make introduction?
Yes, please.
So again, my name's Brett Holland. I'm with Stiefel Financial. My business partner, Mike Battistelli, we're both with Stiefel, representing our local office today. We have Bailey Davis. Bailey's been here before via Zoom and in person. So during COVID, I think we did some Zoom stuff. He's the Managing Director and Senior Client Portfolio Manager at Franklin Templeton, which was like Mason and Franklin Templeton, I know the name like Mason maybe a little bit better. They're one of the managers that we utilize, but Franklin Templeton acquired them a number of years ago now, 20, 2020. 2020, okay, so. But the piece that he is representing is going to talk about today is, it's larger company stocks that are a little bit more.
He's mentioned Stiefel, but your relationship with us is what?
We assist you in managing the pension fund.
Thank you. There's some new guests here.
Okay, I apologize for that. I'm sorry. So Franklin Templeton represents the piece that Bailey's speaking of today, a little over 14%. It's larger companies that are a little bit more growth-oriented, so he'll have some interesting things to share with us, I'm sure. Also, his piece of the pie, if you will, is the best performing thing we've had this year, so they've done a great job for us, too. Good time to come in. So, so if I could ask you to open your book, it's to page 4 of 11, pie chart in the bottom right-hand corner.
Is this the first one you gave us?
Not the, yes, ma'am, yeah, that's the one.
Thank you.
So page 4 of 11 in the bottom right-hand corner, but we'll start in the top left-hand corner. This is our typical quarterly report that we go through with, with each quarter, and the timeframe for this is ending March, but it's really April 1st through June 30th, is what it is. So in that top left-hand section there, kind of going through some of the performance numbers, if you will, the current period, which again is for the second quarter is what we're reporting on. We started off, the balance of the pension was $137,294,525. We had down a little bit, about $206,000 during that period, and ending the, ending the period at $137,22,218. So we were down 0.16% for the quarter, so we were down there. And then a year-to-date number, so this would be January, again, in this particular case, would be through the end of June. The pension started off at $134 million, and then there were, there were withdrawals of about $2.7 million for paying the pensioners, pensionees, and then the total return during that time was about $5.6 million, and then again, ending the balance at $137 million. So the return for the year-to-date, January through June, was 4.23%. Then that far right column, you can see there, the, the total return, that's just a one-year number, so over the last 12 months, the pension was up 10.26%. So any questions on any of that at all?
Right.
So the bottom right-hand corner is just the allocation, and I should have said earlier, Mike will give us updates like he does each time through a little bit more current, so over the last couple of days. But at the bottom right now, the pension in that pie chart area, the cash or what we call cash equivalents, so money markets represent about 2%. And then working clockwise around there, the equities are at about 63%, which is your stock portion, which again is a piece of that is a piece that Bailey's going to be speaking about today. Fixed income is bonds of 30%, and then alternative investments there of 5% is actually the reportfolio, the real estate investment trust that we refer to each time. Then I'll have you jump to page 6 of 11, if you will, just to give a little bit longer perspective in the way of some longer performance numbers. Page 6 of 11, over towards the right hand of the page, it has a one-year, a three-year, a five-year, and a 10-year period. And again, if you go to the bottom of each of those columns, the one-year number, I already mentioned, was 10.26% over the last 12 months. The three-year number has been 3.27%, and that's per year, so some years. The three year number has been, uh, three point two seven percent and that's per year. So some years are higher, some years are lower, but that's been your average. Five year number of six point seven five percent. And then the ten year number of, uh, six point one four percent. Any questions on any of that at all?
Against the assumption of seven two five?
I'm sure I'll let Jamie answer that. He might know better. Or Bob, I'm sorry. Assumption. Okay, sorry. There you go. So. And with that, uh, Michael have some, uh. Updated numbers.
So the updated numbers, uh, this is through yesterday's close. Again, I always preface, it's, uh, not an unaudited number. But it's as accurate as we have today. So, uh, the year to date through yesterday, we're up six point six four percent. And the pension, uh, plan, um, has a balance of a hundred and thirty eight million. Eight hundred and eighteen thousand, seven sixteen. So it's been some growth here so far in this order. Allocation wise, we're still the same as what Brett reported and, and that's well within the investment policy statement. So, uh, there's no, no changes necessarily to make to allocation between stocks, bonds and cash.
Do it some more action. You want to take two hundred of that after Bill?
Um, I was going to bring that up now, if that's all right.
Yeah, sure.
So we were invited in for a work session last week and. We are making a recommendation. We have, um, two small cap managers, uh, Nuvine, which I think the last quarterly meeting we were in. We had mentioned that we were, uh, taking a look at, at that, uh, manager, our, uh. Insolving Services, uh, Department at Stiefel, uh, had them on a wait, uh, watch list. And, uh, we feel like right now is a good opportunity to make a change. And then Roy's Total Return is a, uh, mutual fund that we've had in the plan that covers small cap. And again, there's probably been a little bit of lagging there, uh. Both of those positions together represent about four and a half percent of the overall portfolio. And, uh, we're, we're making recommendations that we move those monies evenly into two other money managers. One is Congress. Uh, it's a small cap growth, uh, manager. Um. And then the other one is Copeland, which is a small cap divvying growth strategy. Um, both of those are. You know. We are due diligence, people's due diligence are, are well rated, um, have a good historical performance as we talked about last week. And we think that would be a good, uh. Good opportunity right now to make those changes.
I'll make a motion to approve those changes as outlined by, uh, Mr. Fattistelli and, uh, outlining our workshop last week. Okay, I moved in second that we make those changes. Uh, any questions regarding the motion? This was aired out pretty thoroughly at the workshop. No changes to allocation?
No. We do have one other recommendation, but it's not a manager change.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so.
Yeah, the second, uh, recommendation, uh, is more of moving some monies around. Um. We think right now, again, there's another opportunity for us to add some value to the plan. Um, and that is in, uh, mid cap or mid sized companies. Um, they're recommending that he takes, um, three million dollars out of large cap value. And moving that over to, uh, to Madison, which we already have in the portfolio, just giving them more money, uh, to manage. This point.
Who would it be going to?
Madison.
Madison.
Sorry, is that mid cap?
That's a mid cap.
Okay.
Yep. Not, not a new manager in any way, just, just shifting some money around.
And you want a, a motion on that?
I don't know if you need a motion or not.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Make a motion to go from, is it ledge cap?
Large.
Large. Large cap.
Value.
Value to Madison.
Second.
Hey. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion required? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same signs, so order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn me over to Bailey.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you to the board in the county for all your support in the ClearBridge Large Cap Growth Portfolio. Um. As mentioned, it's been a, it's been an interesting time for, for large cap growth. Uh, it's probably the hottest. Area of the stock market as we know it today. So anyone who's familiar with the, the term, the magnificent seven, which relates to all the mega cap technology companies that. Definitely plays within our, our universe of companies that we're looking to invest in. So. Um, it has been a, a really interesting period, you know, coming out of the two thousand twenty two market, which was not a pleasant experience for, for investors. Uh, two thousand and twenty three and, and right now, two thousand and twenty four, if, if anyone really recalls, you know, what's been the overriding theme for the market or the economy, it's been. You know, everyone's been looking for a recession and, um, that hasn't happened yet. And a lot of investors were kind of caught on the wrong side, uh, in two thousand and twenty three, and it ended up being. Uh, one of the best years ever for large cap growth companies and also for the, the portion that you have, the ClearBridge Large Cap Growth Portfolio, which. Returned about forty six percent last year and, and returns. And. Then I think we've had a, a bit of a concern coming into this year that. Well, this is going to be the year that we, we see the recession taking place and, uh. Um, again, the opposite has occurred. And, um, so currently through, you know, unaudited numbers through last night, we're up around eighteen percent this year. Uh, for, for large cap growth. So. It's, uh, it's, it's been an interesting period. I, I've been kind of cautioning with investors that. The presidential election years tend to be a little bit different for the investment cycle as we all know it. So. Uh, the typical rhetoric that you hear, uh, from investors is sell in May and go away as we hit the May months of, of the year. Which really means sell in July and buy in October, because that's really the true cycle when you get a correction. But. Uh, the, the presidential election years tend to be a little bit different in that you see, um, market downturns take place in April and May. And that played out pretty perfectly this year. If you recall, the market didn't do well in April and May. And you generally want to be buying very heavily into Memorial Day weekend. Because the summer leading into the presidential election in, in November tends to be a really good time for, for equities. And, uh. This was a big week from an economic standpoint, because all the, the focus has been on inflation. And that's pretty much all you're going to hear out of the, the candidates also is, is talk about inflation and who's been creating inflation as we know it. But if you really look at the, the CPI. Uh, the Consumer Price Index, uh, it's really been dropping like a rock since last year where we, you know, at this time it was closer to, to nine percent. Now we're back down into the, the two. So. It's really become quite more normalized. And. From our vantage point, what's going on with the economy has really been more about, um, things are actually turning back to normal. So we went through the pandemic period. People were flush with cash. Helicopter money was thrown on the US economy. Uh, and you saw exorbitant spending taking place and that helped to drive a shortage of goods, which helped to drive. Uh, inflation as we know it today. But if you remember Chairman Powell at the time, it was basically saying that, uh. Inflation was transitory, meaning it was just going to be a temporary phenomenon. That didn't prove to be the case. Actually, it's taken almost three years to really get that inflation under control. And you've seen. Um, some pain in the US economy also, because essentially what has happened during this time period, as you've seen credit card debt, uh, ratchet much higher. Uh, you've also seen a lot, a lot of defaults on car loans taking place. Um, so there, there are pieces of the economy that are not doing very, very well. Um. The consumer has been, it's kind of a stratification of, of who's doing well and who's not doing well. Um, you know, the, the Lebanon County pension is, is doing well, you know, and people, you know, and pensions and things like that that have. Uh, money to invest. They're, they're very, very pleased right now. Because even on that cash, you're, you're earning five, five and a half percent on cash, which is, is a very. Uh, nice return, which was not taking place, uh, for, for a long, long time. If you remember, we were basically at zero interest rate. So. The economy has actually proven that. It can take on these higher interest rates at the same time. And the real reason that we think of that. Uh, is because the US economy is quite dynamic versus other economies around the globe. And one of the reasons we are so dynamic, dynamic is that we're a, a services based economy. So sixty percent of GDP is really driven through services versus hard goods. Manufacturing, uh, but at the same time, if you look at the manufacturing numbers taking place here in the United States, they're actually ratcheting higher pretty nicely. And a part of that is the, the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act, which is going to drive a lot more spending here in the US. Uh, but if you look at that spending in manufacturing, where's it really going towards? It's going towards, uh, things like data centers. Uh, which plays into kind of the Nvidia case, which is the, the chip companies. Um, so a lot of this money that's being spent is built on fabs, which are building semiconductor plants as well. Um, so you, you've got this big enormous kind of move in spending on the manufacturing side, but we look at it as more kind of tech light, you know, so a lot of this industrial. Production that you're seeing coming out is really through, uh, different kind of tech light types of companies. You know, you think of a company like Eaton Corp or something like that. We own it in the portfolio. Uh, Nextera, which is a, a utility company. Most people would say, you know, why would you buy a utility company as a large cap growth manager? And our view is that. If you think back to the nineteen fifties, utility companies were growth companies at, at those times. Um, we're almost going back to that kind of phenomenon because the amount of energy that we need produced to, to, to fuel these data centers. Uh, that fuel AI and all these other kind of technological improvements that are happening. They consume a tremendous amount of energy. So, so it's become a growth area again. And that's why you're going to continue to see and hear about more and more focus on renewable energy and different forms of energy, clean energy being produced. So. If you're a utility in West Virginia burning coal, there's enormous tax incentives in place to, to make that switch towards natural gas. And renewable energy. So it, it is a growth energy, uh, market that's taking place there. So that's just one area that we're, we're focused on is that kind of. Um. Uh, the IRA, kind of the Inflation Reduction Act kind of beneficiaries, but the two other big areas that we're focused on within your portfolio. Are two huge themes. Uh, one is artificial intelligence. Uh, artificial intelligence is probably one of the most used terms as we know it today. Uh, if you listen to CNBC or any of the other major news networks, that's all they're talking about is AI. And, um. From our vantage point, we've, we've got analysts that have been covering companies like Microsoft for over twenty five years. Uh, it is a real turn of events and, um. There is a lot of hype behind it as well. Some people equate it back to the dot com period when the internet was created in two thousand and then you're going to see this massive bubble burst again. Uh, we, we think of it as a little differently because these companies are actually, uh, generating real earnings and real revenues. So it's not kind of fly by night companies like a pets.com that. Didn't really have a business model and, and so its stocks soar only to crash. Um, these are actually real businesses and AI is really kind of a fancy term for the next, next level of improvement that we're seeing in technology. So you're going to see more and more, uh, at your disposal that you'll be able to use, uh, Copilot is kind of, if you've seen, if you've gone on your browser, you've probably seen Copilot come up, which is Microsoft's. Uh, product that kind of helps you, uh, uh. Uh, find different things on the internet without having to list sites. They'll give you answers right there. Uh, but it is, it is growing. And, um, if you think about companies, Fortune five hundred companies in the US. They're trying to figure out how do we actually implement artificial intelligence into our business models and become more and more profitable at the end of the day. So. That's kind of the things that we were paying attention to. So a company like Accenture, you'll see in the portfolio, which is a, a consulting firm. But they're very much, uh, geared towards technology. And, um, so they've got a huge workload of companies across the US that they're consulting with. And how do they deploy AI into those business models? Whether you're a Costco or you're a Kroger. Uh, or you're a, uh, uh, financial services firm, you know, how do we deploy that AI into our business models? So. So there, there's a lot of interesting things happening behind the scenes. The term Goldilocks is used a bit and that's really a, a fancy way of saying. Um, there's a lot of different growth engines behind the US economy. The other side of it is that you'll hear more and more about is GLP ones. So GLP ones are the weight loss drugs. And if you, we own Eli Lilly in the portfolio, which is one of the major producers. Uh, Novo Nordisk is another company that produces these, these drugs, but it's a very competitive space. So. The healthcare industry has been, um, kind of ratcheted with these, these weight loss drugs and to the, to the point where. Uh, a lot of investors were fearing that we don't need other drug companies because essentially these weight loss treatments are going to eradicate the need for other drugs. Because people are going to be so, so healthy as a, as a result of, of, of losing all this weight. And, uh. Actually, the opposite is, is kind of happening. So we own Stryker in the portfolio, which is kind of a, you know, if anyone's had an artificial knee or. Uh, hip or, uh, uh, shoulder replacement, Stryker's the company that produces those, those, uh, joints. And, um, we saw that stock actually drop precipitously in the fourth quarter last year into this year. Uh, because the concern was why people aren't going to need knee and hip replacements if, if they're losing all this weight. And Stryker actually. Uh, the, the CEO had a great take on it. He said, look, we actually welcome these weight loss drugs because. Um, people get more and more active when they're on it. So they're playing more pickleball, they're playing more tennis and all these things. And there's more injuries that occur, obviously. So our, our business. Uh, in terms of supplying these different, uh, joints and whatnot is, has skyrocketed as a result. So. You know, so my point is there's, there's a lot of different ways to look at AI. GLP ones and the, the Inflation Reduction Act, you just have to do the work in terms of finding those companies that are going to be the big beneficiaries of, of those kinds of big, uh. Uh, big moves. So, so from our vantage point, you know, the market's not cheap. It's had a great run, but a lot of the, the expensive. Parts of the market are really those mag seven types of companies. And, um. There's a lot of work that we, we own a number of them, but the, our benchmark, the Russell one thousand growth index, if you look at it from an exposure standpoint right now. Fifty five percent of the bench is in those seven companies. That's a lot. The S and P five hundred, to put it in perspective, forty percent of the S and P five hundred is in those, those companies. So we own about thirty nine percent of the portfolio in, in seven companies, uh, but we're, we're still. A lot less than, than the overall benchmark itself. Uh, also our tech exposure is about ten percent below what the Russell one thousand growth index is, and that's been the best performing area for us, even though we're underway tech. So we, we, you know, we're, we're finding opportunities in the marketplace. Um. You know, think about even a company like Starbucks that was really out of favor. They made a change in the CEO this week. Um, it hadn't been a great stock, but we were buying the company in the portfolio when the stock was weak and we, we expected some sort of change. Lo and behold, they, they hired the, the Chipotle CEO, Brian Nichol, uh, who we knew from our days of owning Chipotle in the portfolio. It's a terrific operator. He gets moved into the CEO role at Starbucks and all of a sudden the stock jumps twenty two percent in one day. Because he's going to make so many great changes in that company. But, uh, um, so it, it, it's just, it, it's, it's a crazy kind of period with, with, with the markets, but you just kind of have to. Um, do the work, do the fundamental work and, and believe that over the next three to five years, these companies are going to be able to, to grow. So. So net, net, I would say, uh, really interesting environment going forward. We're probably going to see a little bit more volatility as we get into this election. It's probably going to be a nasty election. It seems like it is already. Uh, but, um, at the same time, any kind of pullbacks, just like we've seen over the last two weeks where you had an eleven percent drawdown in the markets. That provided enormous opportunity to, to put some money to work in, into certain areas of the market. We've already recouped the losses that were produced during that, that time period. So, um. So we're, we're prepared for volatility, but at the same time, looking to be opportunistic.
Excellent, uh, update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question.
Yes.
I think somewhere in there, you may have, uh. Mentioned. Like in a word, Nvidia.
Yes.
Is that the first one on your page nineteen? Uh, that's highest ten point four percent representation in the total.
It is. So Nvidia is on page nineteen. This lists the, the top ten companies, uh, in the portfolio that we have. So. We own roughly forty companies in the, the, the entire strategy. Uh, Nvidia. Is interesting because that ten point four percent. We actually cut the stock down to six and a half percent in the first quarter this year. And the stock since has risen all the way back to a ten point, point four percent weighting in, in the portfolio. So. We bought Nvidia originally for the strategy back in December of two thousand and eighteen. If you remember back then, it wasn't a real pretty Christmas and then two thousand and eighteen, the market dropped twenty two percent in December that year. Uh, it was, it was down almost a thousand points, right, leading it to, it was down seven hundred points on Christmas Eve that year. Uh, Nvidia was the worst performing stock in the S and P five hundred. It was down fifty percent in the. It was down fifty percent in the fourth quarter that year. And that's when we, we initiated the purchase in Nvidia. So it's, it's been a terrific company, obviously. It's, it's really the arms dealer as we know it today for, for artificial intelligence. They're that dominant. But there's also big embedded expectations in, in the company. But we expect they're probably going to continue to deliver for some time. But at the same time, we, we have done some profit-taking in that name, but the stock price has, has jumped back up.
I was reading somewhere that the chips are going to be made in the USA, a lot of them now. Is they, are they part of that movement?
No. So Nvidia is, is not part of that, that movement. So the company that really makes their, their chips for them, they do all the design work and, and whatnot. But Nvidia's chips are primarily made by Taiwan Semiconductor, based out of Taiwan. And they're the largest fabricator of, of semiconductor chips in the world. And we actually own Taiwan Semi. Its stock hasn't, hasn't performed as well Nvidia, yet they make Nvidia's chips. So we actually bought Taiwan Semi this year in, in the portfolio. More, the, the problem, that, that is a, a true statement, that they are trying to build more chips here in the US. The problem is, you know, if you look at Intel, for instance, which is getting the big fab, you know, they, all the Chips Act money is going towards them to build this fab in, in Columbus, Ohio. It, it, it's, it's, it's difficult, because the founder of Taiwan Semi is ninety-six years old now. And he, he was just interviewed in, in, in March. And he talked about competition for the United States. And if you remember back in the late nineties, Taiwan Semi actually built a fab in Texas at the time to give Texas Instruments was growing and they were going to build Texas Instruments chips. And he said the attrition rate at that fab that they built in Texas was about twenty-five percent per year. They were losing employees working at, at the fab. And Taiwan Semi, their, their attrition rate in Taiwan is less than a half percent per year. They put the people up in housing, dormitory-style housing, the workers there. It's like a cultural part, it's part of their culture, these people that work. It's a, a, you know, you're, you're proud that you work for Taiwan Semi. And he said that'll, you know, the cultural change in the US versus Taiwan is, is enormous. And the reason, one of the reasons they've been so successful is, you know, part of that culture, all these people, they don't want to leave Taiwan Semi. So, you know, the, the biggest risk for Taiwan Semi is, is more geopolitical, where, you know, China kind of comes in and invades Taiwan and, you know, acquires that country. That's, that's kind of the, the doomsday scenario there. But at the same time, China has to be careful, because they, they get a lot of chips from, from Taiwan Semi as well. And, and Taiwan Semi also produces all of Apple's chips. So they're, they're a big player, to say the least.
Thank you.
I would, I would just comment on that, that your crystal ball looks pretty good. Because if you took money off the table with Nvidia in the first quarter, that was a great move.
Yeah.
Taiwan Semiconductor is still the biggest. And until the, until the, you know, this production in the US takes off, they're still the biggest. They're still going to be the biggest, yeah, for a while. And I looked on page fourteen, where you had new positions and eliminated positions. The way you've gotten in and out of things, the timing's pretty, been pretty good.
It's been pretty good. The, you know, Intel, we, we'd owned Intel for a while. It, it, it's been a disappointing name. They, they really, they've got a lot of money from the US government backing them. But they really haven't been able to deliver. So we actually moved on from Intel at a very opportune time, because the stock has, has got brushed, basically, in the, the last two months. But Nike and UPS were two other companies that we eliminated from the portfolio, which is, has worked out as well. UPS, we've owned for a number of years, but we felt that the growth going forward, and, and it's been a good stock for us, you know, we had, we had nice gains in the, in the name. But it, it had become pretty full from a valuation perspective. And we just felt that it was time to, there was better opportunities in, in the market. And.
In two thousand and twenty-one, you made some, some post-COVID moves that looked to be pretty good. You still, you still have Costco, I presume?
Uh, we, no, we, we do not have Costco anymore. And Costco's been a terrific company. So thank you for noticing that. Yeah, no, you can't win them all, obviously. But it's, no, Costco is, even though, you know, it's, it's funny, you know, everyone pays attention to Warren Buffett's moves every quarter, what he's doing. And so people were freaking out, because he trimmed half his position in Apple, his, in the latest quarter. But people also don't realize that, you know, he sold Costco at a hundred dollars. Stock went to a thousand dollars after he sold it. So, you know, there's, even the world's greatest investor is, can make some mistakes. So.
Right, well, thank you again. Any questions, Mr. Control, or anything? Good. And we'll. Do our, is the funding end of it on the budget side for the art. And then you guys continue, you know, we're in this for the long haul and you understand our culture and I appreciate all that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. Matt Gudeley, County Solicitor. I have one item for consideration by the board this morning. I'm requesting approval of a settlement agreement involving a former employee of the county, Nacy Rivera. I'll first ask that the board approve the direct payment by the county in the amount of three thousand nine hundred dollars per the terms of the agreement. I do apologize that the agreement was late in getting to you. The, the final draft was sent over by counsel, who is representing the county in this matter. And it was sent over late yesterday afternoon. So the first motion I would ask is approving the, the payment of three thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll make that too. Approved.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
That's the one outlined on page two of five.
That's correct.
It's moved and seconded, that we approved that payment. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most same signs, so moved.
Secondly, I would ask that the board take action and approve the actual settlement itself, the terms of which are contained in the two settlement documents presently before you. As part of the approval, I would ask that you authorize our insurance provider, Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, to pay the remaining balance of the settlement amount. That amount is sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second. It's removed and seconded, that we approved that insurance payment for the settlement. Any questions regarding the motion? There are none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most same signs, so moved.
That's all I have for the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could circle back real quick on the, I did try to contact, excuse me, Del Voight by Messenger, but I, I didn't get a reply yet. But just to circle back on that real quick, the two thousand and twenty-three application they had for their two thousand and twenty-four conference was a request for a seven thousand five hundred dollar grant and showed a one thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollar match. So it was similar. So I think the twelve hundred, twelve hundred fifty dollars is correct. So they're asking for five thousand. I, I, you must have waived, waived your guidelines for that one and approved a higher amount and lesser of a match. So.
Glad we have these guidelines in place now.
I just wanted to follow back on your question for that. So I have some disabled veteran exemption requests or applications. They are for property tax exemption. They are for Howard Arnold III of Mount Zion Road, Lebanon, Michael Costa of Little Acres, Alira, and Vicente Velas Velas of Sally End Drive, Lebanon.
I get motion to approve the exemption.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve those real estate exemptions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same signs, so moved.
Okay, the next item I have is a reappointment to the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse Advisory Council. This is for Audrey Fortna, who, of course, you all know is the chief of the probation office. And she has served and is willing to serve again another term in the criminal justice category on the advisory board. Expiration of the term would be February nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Make a motion to approve Audrey Fortna.
It's removed and seconded, that we approved that reappointment. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Most same signs, so moved.
The next item I'm presenting on behalf of Sean Drasher. He's at a conference, election conference this week and is unable to be here to present. But this is for the Election Integrity Grant Program that is offered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They have renewed it in the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Lebanon County share for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five is four hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Nothing has changed in terms of the guidelines of the grant. Funds may be spent in a list of nine categories. Again, they have not changed. At this point, there are no single large purchases that Sean is projecting for this particular fund. It will still be used to cover a broad spectrum of election-related expenses and to continue to invest in redundant systems to enhance election security. So if you would, they had a very compressed timeline to, I guess, because of state budget passing late. And then have, they have actually August fifteenth today, deadline of, of accepting the grant. So I'd ask you for your, for your recommending approval of that.
Make a motion to approve the grant application. Although.
Second, the motion.
It's moved and seconded, that we approved that renewal, that grant. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, no one in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most same signs, so moved. Okay. Anything else? I see Jen Kuzos here with us this morning. Anything to do with that?
I understand the hotel tax grant. I guess I have one question, if, if I've got me. I also do marketing grants to tourism-based organizations. And I don't want to overlap anything. So it'd be wonderful if I could also get your lists of applications and approvals, if I could be in that loop.
Sure.
Just for the sake of not overlapping things. If I, you know, check in with Dawn or whatever the process will be, I think that's important.
Okay. Done. Appreciate you. Anything else about motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We stand adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.